The decision from the municipal court in terms of that kind of gives you a basis for making some decision here. Right now this property is being proposed to be built within the 100 foot setback, which is not allowable in the shoreline zone. Under the situation with our property, which there's no more than this practical extent we can allow there. The property that was there at one time was removed, more by more than 50 percent. Planning board ruled that it was had been ruled had been removed by more than 50 percent. The whole matter ended up in court for a long period of time in which the town prevailed in its action. So I'm not here to tell you how to how to do your jobs. All I'm doing is putting the information in front of you, okay? Related to this this matter, this permitting issue, this permitting question and the issues, the legal issues that have been going on with the town of Mr. and Mrs. Cayer for several years now. So you have the information in front of you that would indicate that if the Cayers would be interested in building there, they would have to be outside of the 100 foot setback. The Cayers had submitted a variance request to the Board of Appeals without having the prior CEO process the permit application. All shoreline zoning permits need to go before the state domain. This is the state domain ordinance that is enforced and administered and enforced locally. And the variance requests couldn't be, it can only be processed once the CEO or in this case the planning board makes a decision on the building permit. And if there was a decision that Mr. and Mrs. Cayer didn't feel that they supported, they would be entitled to request for variance and that would start a whole process with the Board of Appeals, notification to the state domain DDP. There's a whole process that we have to follow, public hearing, fees paid and whatnot. So all I can do is give you the information we're looking for the matter. The proposed property is proposed to be built within the 100 foot setback, which is not allowable in the shoreline zone. Under the situation with our property, which there's no more than this practical extent we can allow there. The property that was there at one time was removed, more by more than 50 percent. The planning board ruled that it was had been ruled had been removed by more than 50 percent. The whole matter ended up in court for a long period of time in which the town prevailed in its action. So I'm not here to tell you how to how to do your jobs. All I'm doing is putting the information in front of you, okay? Related to this this matter, this permitting issue, this permitting question and the issues, the legal issues that have been going on with the town of Mr. and Mrs. Cayer for several years now. So you have the information in front of you that would indicate that if the Cayers would be interested in building there, they would have to be outside of the 100 foot setback. The Cayers had submitted a variance request to the Board of Appeals without having the prior CEO process the permit application. All shoreline zoning permits need to go before the state domain. This is the state domain ordinance that is enforced and administered and enforced globally. And the variance requests couldn't be, it can only be processed once the CEO or in this case the planning board makes a decision on the building permit. And if there was a decision that Mr. and Mrs. Cayer didn't feel that they supported, they would be entitled to request for variance and that would start a whole process with the Board of Appeals, notification to the state domain DDP. There's a whole process that we have to follow, public hearing, fees paid and whatnot. So all I can do is give you the information we're looking for the matter. The proposed property is proposed to be built within the 100 foot setback, which is wouldn't be allowed. And there's case law, Matavaska versus Richard Cayer versus the town of Matavaska that you have. That's not me making this up. This is all factual information that I'm putting in front of you to help you in your decision making. Thank you.
Now Gary, a vested permit would be if we would have changed the shoreline zoning after issuing them a permit, correct?
Repeat that question please.
The vested permit, if we issued a permit, it would be vested if we would within the time span we gave them for the permit, they would we would have changed the shoreline zoning law.
A permit that would be vested, so if if a permit is issued in the shoreline zone and there's substantial amount of work done to it, the permit the applicant can apply for an extension after one year.
Okay, but that's a that would be an extension. The vested would be if we would have changed the actual law on them.
Right.
Yeah, which we didn't. Okay.
How long is the vested, is it how long is it good for? Is it tied?
No, the permits are no longer vested. The 2012, 2013 permits are.
No longer vested.
They were vested because we never changed the law. We never changed the ordinance.
This permit application in front of you is a new application. You have to look at it as a new application and there's no grandfathering of old buildings that you can build upon even, you know, to the greatest practical extent. So in here you have you have a new application in front of you. The LPI needs to do his job on this, whether or not the old septic system there will suffice for a new structure. That hasn't been done. The LPI has informed me that the site evaluation person, Sarah Ashley, has not been contacted by the Cayers to do a site survey, soil survey, to develop a new septic system there. And I know that Don Duchesne has been in contact with the Cayers twice on on that, on his end of things for permitting of the septic system.
Sounds like there's a lot of things that's just not done, right? To complete the.
Well, you you have in front of you the information. I think that you have to make a decision here. The Cayers are entitled to a decision on this permit, one way or the other, okay? And I don't think that it would be tabled this matter.
No.
Okay. I think you need to act upon it. I don't I don't believe that this this planning board acting as a CEO with the shoreline zoning rules of the way they are and the court decision supporting the town can approve this permit, okay? However, there's another step to the process and you could go it could go to the Board of Appeals. You don't have the authority to not issue permits like the CEO that aren't in line with shoreline zoning. You would create grandeur and insist here, this is within 100 foot of the setback. This is within 100 feet. I think the lot is roughly 120 feet deep in all.
How much?
120 feet.
Total?
The whole thing from the high water mark. So.
So it's only got 20 feet?
Only got 20 feet.
Then you have to be so much from the road?
Then you gotta be 10 feet from the road, possibly with the five foot variance from the Board of Appeals.
So you only got 10 feet?
There's not much to be that can be built upon, but it's here.
Yeah, but that then you you used to be something there. What happened to whatever was there?
I can't hear you anything that's going on. I don't know what he said, what he's talking about. We're gonna have to speak up. We're we're, I'm 70, 60 years old. I have a hard time to hear. We asked you to speak louder. We don't know what what's been said so far.
Okay, enough, enough point of order. When I come to, I said point of order. I am the chairman. I'm speaking.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe we can invite him to sit a little bit closer.
So what happened to whatever was there prior?
It's still there.
But there used to be an old mobile home there.
We got permits to expand that mobile home and we did that. You have a picture of what?
I have a picture. I don't know who took the picture. That's on the last page.
That's the one with the kid. That's the later on.
The one that you should.
There's a camper there and there's a boat there.
So back when the stop work order was issued.
That has nothing to do with the building permit. Excuse me. Nothing to do with the building permit, Mike.
Like when the stop work order was issued way back when, all work ended there. And what was left is.
The decision from the municipal court in front of you that kind of gives you a basis for making some decision here. Right now, this property is being proposed to be built within the 100-foot setback, which is not allowable in the shoreline zone. Under the situation with our property, which there's no more than this practical extent we can allow there. The property that was there at one time was removed, more by more than 50%. Planning Board ruled that it was had been ruled had been removed by more than 50%. The whole matter ended up in court for a long period of time in which the town prevailed in its action. So I'm not here to tell you how to do your jobs. All I'm doing is putting the information in front of you, okay? Related to this matter, this permitting issue, this permitting question, and the issues, the legal issues that have been going on with the town of Mr. and Mrs. Kayer for several years now. So you have the information in front of you that would indicate that if the Kayers would be interested in building there, they would have to be outside of the 100-foot setback. The Kayers had submitted a variance request to the Board of Appeals without having the prior CEO process the permit application. All shoreline zoning permits need to go before the State of Maine. This is the State of Maine ordinance that is enforced and administered and enforced locally. And the variance requests couldn't be, it can only be processed once the CEO or in this case, the planning board makes a decision on the building permit. And if there was a decision that Mr. and Mrs. Kayer didn't feel that they supported, they would be entitled to request for variance and that would start a whole process with the Board of Appeals, notification to the State of Maine DDP. There's a whole process that we have to follow, public hearing, fees paid, and whatnot. So all I can do is give you the information, really, for the matter. The proposed property is proposed to be built within the 100-foot setback, which is wouldn't be allowed. And there's case law, Matavaska versus, or Richard Kayer versus the town of Matavaska that you have. That's not me making this up. This is all factual information that I'm putting in front of you to help you in your decision-making. Thank you.
Now Gary, a vested permit would be if we would have changed the shoreline zoning after issuing them a permit, correct?
Repeat that question, please.
The vested permit, if we issued a permit, it would be vested if we would, within the time span we gave them for the permit, they would, we would have changed the shoreline zoning law?
A vested, a permit that would be vested, so if, if a permit is issued in the shoreline zone and there's substantial amount of work done to it, the permit, the applicant can apply for an extension after one year.
Okay, but that's a, that would be an extension. The vested would be if we would have changed the actual law on them?
Right.
Yeah, which we didn't. Okay.
How long is the vested, is, how long is it good for? Is it?
No, the permits are no longer vested. The 2012, 2013 permits are.
No longer vested?
They were vested because we never changed the law. We never changed the ordinance.
This permit application in front of you is a new application.
Okay.
You have to look at it as a new application. And there's no grandfathering of old buildings that you can build upon, even, you know, to the greatest practical extent. So in here, you have, you have a new application in front of you. The LPI needs to do his job on this, whether or not the old septic system there will suffice for a new structure. That hasn't been done. The LPI has informed me that the site evaluation person, Sarah Ashley, has not been contacted by the Kayers to do a site survey, soil survey, to develop a new septic system there. And I know that Don Duchesne has been in contact with the Kayers twice on that, on his end of things for permitting of the septic system.
Sounds like there's a lot of things that's just not done, right? To complete the.
Well, you, you have in front of you the information. I think that you have to make a decision here.
Yeah.
The, the Kayers are entitled to a decision on this permit, one way or the other.
Yep.
Okay? And I don't think that it would be tabled with the matter.
No.
Okay? I think you need to act upon it. I don't, I don't believe that this, this planning board, acting as a CEO with the shoreline zoning rules of the way they are, and the court decision supporting the town can approve this permit. Okay? However, there's another step to the process and you could go, it could go to the Board of Appeals. You don't have the authority to not issue permits like the CEO that aren't in line with shoreline zoning. You would create grand error and says here, this is within 100-foot of the setback. This is within 100 feet. I think the lot is roughly 120 feet deep in all.
How much?
120 feet.
Total?
The whole thing from the high water mark. So.
So he's only got 20 feet?
Only got 20 feet.
Then he has to be so much from the road?
Then you gotta be 10 feet from the road, possibly with the five-foot variance from the Board of Appeals.
So you only got 10 feet?
There's not much to be, that can be built upon.
But a chair. Yeah, but back then, there used to be something there. What happened to whatever was there?
I can't hear you anything that's going on. I don't know what he said, what he's talking about. We're gonna have to speak up. We're, we're, I'm 70, 60 years old. I have a hard time to hear. We asked you to speak louder. We don't know what, what's been said so far.
Enough, enough point of order. Enough. When I come to.
This is the point of order.
I talked, I said point of order. I am the chairman. I'm speaking.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe we can invite him to sit a little bit.
So what happened to whatever was there prior?
It's still there.
But there used to be an old mobile home there.
We got permits to expand that mobile home and we did that. You have a picture of?
I have a picture. I don't know who took the picture. That's on the last page.
I think we've done about two different things.
The one with the key, that's the, later on, it comes as a.
The one that you.
There's a camper there and there's a boat there.
So back, back when the stop work order was issued.
That has nothing to do with the building permit. Excuse me. Nothing to do with the building permit, Mike.
Like, when the stop work order was issued way back when, all work ended there. And what was left is basically what you see there is that the four poles and the flat roof of a structure. No work was done beyond that. The trailer was removed. The, the structure that was there had been removed by more than 50%. Okay? And the planning board moved on. And there was a planning board minutes that said that they, and it was actually Vince Danger that, that made the motion. And it was supported. It was voted on by the planning board that that structure had been removed by more than 50%. But the permits that were issued back then weren't followed. And that's when the stop work order went into effect. And that, in the case went to court for a while, way before I got here, way before Ryan, that was back in the Christina days. Okay? And here we are today. Many, many, several years after, almost 10 years after.
Okay.
So the law is considered at this point, there is no structure that you can build upon or add upon or move back to the greatest practical extent. This is in essence, a vacant lot.
So you would have just got it 100 feet?
You would have to start at 100 feet.
And he's only got 120?
You as a, you as a planning board have the authority to issue a permit within the shoreline zoning ordinance rules, which is backed by 100 feet, meaning the setback requirement side and road. The Board of Appeals could take up a variance if they don't, if you, or you, or this board doesn't, you know, they render a decision that the Kayers aren't in favor of, they would have the option to vote, make a request to the Board of Appeals.
If I have a shoreline ordinance when I, to allow it, it's gonna have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and because of the state regs, this is out of our control.
Exactly. It's the shoreline, I mean, the, what we're going through right now with DDP to make changes to, it's that same ordinance. It's not our land use. It's the shoreline.
So I'm, I'm wondering if the Kayers are aware that this is a state regulations and it's really out of our hands. We have to follow the state regulations. That's my understanding here as we look to try to make the decision on this. And we, we hate to forbid people to do what they want to do, but we're, we're responsible here to follow state regs.
Yes.
And unless a permit would be written up in a different way and something would, would come up, uh, would, that would allow it, we, we have no choice.
Yeah. Yep. Exactly. And if there's, if there's gonna be any changes made to it, it's gonna be through the Board of Appeals, not through us. We can't bend it, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So could we have a motion?
How would we?
Can we speak? Can we speak?
Yes, would, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Be quiet.
No.
What?
Let me make it easier.
No. 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 First of all.
Hey, I'm telling you, let me make it easier.
This is not right.
You have the floor, ma'am.
This is not right.
Let, we'll take a break here. Let's take a break.
We won our case in court. The town dismissed this with prejudice. There were no violations against the permits that we got from Bob.
And come with me. We're gonna take a break here for a minute.
Yes, sir.
Are we able to talk a little?
Yes, yes, we are.
Uh, this has been going on for some time.
Yes, we have to follow this fatigue. I mean, that's not, we can't.
Doesn't seem that it meets any of the parameters.
No, it doesn't. And it has to go to Board of Appeals to have those changed.
And even then, they're constrained.
Exactly. Within certain footages and what they can and can't allow.
They can do a little leeway, but they can't completely dismiss.
Had that old mobile home still be there, would they have any hope of anything?
If they kept it up by more than 50%?
Well, I mean, it, it was pretty run down there at the time here.
Yeah.
And I think there's somebody was using the sewer system and the water system and they had part of the camper there. And they were using that summertime moment there.
And Gary, the things you read a lot of are kind of guiding us here to say that, you know, these things have been brought to court and those findings are clear that it's not allowable.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, hope he's gone now.
Yeah. Well, they can go to the Board of Appeals, not through us.
Right.
Yes, but as far as.
Then what if, then what if the Board of Appeals, what's their other option?
So, so what happens if, once, once a, an appeal is made to the Board of Appeals, notice has to be sent in main DEP, I believe, no less than 25 days or 30 days before the Board of Appeals is to, is to take up the matter. There used to be a hearing on it. Proper notice needs to go out. File of fees need to be made. Okay? The Board of Appeals has very limited capacity to make variances. They can't just grant variances because they feel like it. They're guided by certain rules within the shoreline zoning ordinance. And they're also guided by main DEP. So when, sometimes it's not well understood. And when it's not well understood, we ask main DEP to opine and give us some, some support, okay, on the matter. And the Board of Appeals will be a different process in this permitting process, if you will. But you as a planning board, and I don't want to take away from your authority. I'm not interested in that at all. Okay? At all.
It's information.
All I, all I'm doing here in, in the absence of a CEO is providing you all the information, giving you all the information that you need so you can make an informed decision. I got no skin in the game here. Okay? And, but, but other than to say that there are legal matters that have been going on for quite some time and there is decisions made in the court of law that will guide your decision-making. Not from me, not from Roxy, because she hasn't been here that long, but from the courts. Okay? So with that being said, the Kayers are entitled to a, a decision on this procedure.
Any comments on that side? I know they stopped and they left. I'm not sure if you wanna.
You have the, you're welcome to have the floor for a moment if you'd like.
Yes. And I'll start by saying, can you please speak up? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Mr. and Mrs. Kayer, is it possible that you could move forward?
I didn't place these things here. Can you please speak louder? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you. All I'm asking is that we can hear what you're talking about.
And what you're discussing.
Okay. Now, go ahead. Oh, that's not nice. What Gary Picard has said, most of what he said, it are lies. That's his opinion. And first of all, he has no standing here. What capacity are you in here as?
I, I.
Are you the town manager?
Mr. Kayer, Mr. Kayer.
I asked him a question.
Yes, but you're getting off topic.
No, I'm not getting off topic.
Yes, that's not, that's not what we're discussing. I'm letting you speak on, on what we have on the agenda.
In regards to your permit?
Yes.
Okay. I have the right to ask if he has standing here to speak.
He's the town manager and it's a public meeting. He's welcome to be here.
He has no authority.
He does?
As the town manager to get involved in the.
He's the one providing us the information right now. He's the one giving us all of our information before our meetings.
And I was supposed to be doing that?
We have your.
I'm the one applying for.
We have the information. Yes.
Is he the one applying for an application?
We do have a copy of your permit, Mr. Kayer.
Yes. We have, we have everything that you turned into the town. We have all of it.
According to the code book. Where's the? You know what I'm looking for?
The code book.
The town, to apply it. Right. Our town code book says, "If the building permit or part that is not substantially completed within two years of issuing the permit, the permit shall lapse." That's what happened here, correct?
Yes.
It says also, "This is the building permit town code. It may be renewed upon application."
Yeah, but it would have to, we would have to renew it. We would have to agree that it can be renewed and it can't be. We have the, the court documents that say it can't be. It's not a vested permit.
Who said that?
The court.
No, that's not true. I'm, I'm. The code book says it can be, it may be renewed, it lapses.
Maybe. It doesn't say it will be. It says may. It goes against our shoreline zoning ordinance.
Are you gonna let me speak?
I'm, I'm letting you speak, but I'm explaining to you.
No, you're, you're explaining to me, but the code book says, "If the permit lapses, it may be renewed upon application." I, I applied for another application to continue the project, correct?
Yes.
"The building permit shall not be required if the market value of the work is 15,000 or less." "We have the right to reapply." Now, let me give you a scenario. Gary starts building a house. My commission. Mike starts building a house. He has two years to finish the project, correct?
Yes.
He falls off the roof and he ends up in the hospital for a year. After a year, it's been two years, when he comes back, the permits, permits have lapsed. He's built the house, the roof is built, and now what he's doing is finishing the project. The permits have expired. According to this here, you can come back and ask to continue the project, to finish the project.
But your, your permits are from nine years ago.
Pardon?
Your permits are from almost nine years ago.
That's not true. That Gary.
What year was it?
Gary said that. That's not true.
What year was the permit issued?
I can't hear you.
What year was the permit issued?
2012 and 2013.
That's, that's not, almost nine years.
2013.
Okay, years.
You had two years. We had, so 2013, 14, and 15, right? So that's six years. Now, you were off by what now?
That's still six years ago.
Yes.
And now, I, because we've been in court with this, after, after the, the court case was finished and we won, it was a malicious prosecution. We won the case, okay? In 2016, as soon as the case was finished, the day after, I went to see Drew. I asked Drew to be able to finish the project. And Drew said, "I don't know what to do." And he said, "I said, 'Well, all we're asking is for you to issue a permit so we can continue the project and finish it.'" So when he refused to answer my question, he said, "I don't know what to do. I'm gonna look into it." I asked my attorney to write a letter. My attorney wrote a letter to Drew. Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
"Thank you for taking the time to meet with Richard Kayer recently regarding his building project at Camp 468, Mat 34, Lot 20. I understand that there may be some confusion about the status of the enforcement case regarding this project as well as the current permit, number 2673, dated April 8, 2013. Mr. Kayer asked me to help clarify things in the hopes that you and he can move forward with the permit and project as soon as possible. Regarding the status of the enforcement case, I can confirm for you that the case against Mr. and Mrs. Kayer was dismissed with prejudice on September 6, 2016, and that a finding to that effect was entered on the Superior Court's docket on September 7, 2016. A copy of the docket record for the case, docket number C.A.R.S.C-CB-2014-082, is attached for your convenience with the pertinent docket entry highlighted for you on page four. You will also see that this was a final judgment resulting in the case being closed on September 7, 2016. You should also note that the legal effect, a dismissal with prejudice, means that no action based on the same allegations set forth in the complaint can ever be brought back against Mr. and Mrs. Kayer in the future. Thus, both the complaint and stop work order that were issued in connection with the complaint are null and void. Since there would not likely have been any avenue for an appeal of the final judgment under these circumstances, I believe that it is safe to say that the enforcement case is now finally concluded and that the Superior Court will not be taking any further action or issue, or issuing any other decision in the case. To the extent that the appeal could have been taken from the dismissal with prejudice, the time for filing such an appeal would have been 21 days under Rule 2B3 of the Main Rules of Appellant Procedure. That time has now expired. Because the enforcement case that was challenging Mr. and Mrs. Kayer, Kayer's actions undertaken pursuant to their permit, number 2673, has been dismissed with prejudice, I believe that the permit remains valid. The permits cannot be considered to have expired because of any failure to act by the Kayers because the Kayers were made subject to a stop work order on June 6, 2013. I believe the law is pretty clear that the stop work order tolls the running of the time period related to the expiration of the permit. Such the permit would not, would not be expired because of any failure to act on the part of Mr. and Mrs. Kayer. So under the circumstances and given the fact that Mrs., Mr. Kayer's project has been held up past the building season for this year, I believe the simplest thing to do would be to reissue the Kayer's permit, 2673, for the upcoming building season in the spring of 2017 and would be April 8, 2017, based on the original permit issued date of April 8, 2013. This new permit date would be subject to the one-year extension as set forth in Section 16F of the shoreline zoning ordinance. If Mr. and Mrs. Kayers undertake a substantial start on the project next year, I trust you will find this information and clarification helpful in continuing your work with Mr. and Mrs. Kayer on this project. P, please feel free to contact me if I can be of further help. If you have legal representation on this matter, please forward this letter to your attorney and have your attorney contact me so that I may direct any further correspondence about this matter to your attorney. Now.
Mr. Kayer, who's the gentleman that we're supposed to contact in this matter?
Lou Rossingal. Lou Rossingal.
And that was written when?
October 13, 2016. Now, the, the issue here is that the town of Matavaska issued us permits to build that building. That building, we met with the planning board in 2008. They established the greatest practical extent. What that means is that at some point, the planning board, when you start this type of project and it's within 100 feet of the high water mark, and that's where the old camp was, they determined, the planning board determined that the greatest practical extent to build an expansion on that camp was at the same location that it was at that time. And that was 60 feet from the high water mark.
Okay, so an expansion. Uh, you're saying there was, there was a structure there before when they approved it?
Yes, but we bought the lot. There was a camp there.
You removed the structure.
We, we, we met with the planning board.
Yes, but you removed the structure.
And with the planning board, it was determined that with our permit application to expand the camp, it was understood and it was clearly said in the minutes that we would remove the camp and build an expansion at the same location. That was in the minutes.
In 2008.
In the planning board minutes.
That was in 2008 though, or 2021 now. That was years ago. That was a different board, different town. I mean, everything. Our shoreline zoning, we have to follow this. This board has to follow this.
Wait, 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 wait. In 2008 and in 2012, we applied for a permit to continue that application in 2012. And Bob Willeth agreed and that determination of the greatest practical extent. And he gave us a, at that same location, and he gave us a permit, and that permit said, can you, where's the permit?
Uh, 2012. What year was the other structure removed? What year was the other structure removed?
In two thousand thirteen.
So when these permits were issued, you're saying the original structure was still there? And it was an under the understanding that that was an extension on that structure? But now that structure is.
It was understood, it was understood that we were removing that. In fact, Bob Willett is the one that told us we should remove it. Because he was telling us and the tax assessor was saying that it would it. The tax assessor wrote and we had, we had that, did you have that, that information? The tax assessor recommended the removal. Bob Willett at the select, at the planning board meeting told us that and told us before that we should remove the whole camp because it was an old nineteen fifty camper with an extension. And that if we wanted to build, we had to meet with the planning board, the planning board would determine the greatest practical extent. And it was agreed with the planning board in the minutes that we would remove the old camp and build that extension. Now, in two thousand twelve, we applied to continue that project. And Bob Willett is the one that gave us the permit and it said, "Extension of existing camper and addition by constructing steel framework sixteen by twenty. Construct second floor with loft and cathedral ceiling. Height of building shall be no higher than twenty feet within seventy-five feet of the normal high water line. From existing ground level in front, ditesting septic system is required. New construction shall be no closer than five feet from the property line." Now.
You're, it it was an extension that you were granted, not a new structure. You were granted an extension on the existing structure that you removed. After removing that structure, there's nothing we can do here on this.
That's that's not, that's 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 wrong, okay?
No, that's right, that's exactly how our ordinance is, that's how we are supposed to interpret structures.
Yes, but that's not what happened.
That's not.
We built over the old camp.
And but then you removed it, correct?
After.
Wait a minute. We we got a permit to build a brand-new building with a cathedral ceiling and a loft at the same location that the old camp was.
But it says extension.
It's an expansion.
Of the existing structure, which you.
Can I explain, please? It was understood at the planning board and it was in the minutes that we were removing the old camp and expanding the camp at the same location with a cathedral ceiling and a loft. Now, are you saying that we should keep the old nineteen fifty camper inside of the new camp?
No, I'm saying you were granted an extension. You removed the other thing and now you're applying for a new permit through us.
See, you're arguing that we should have.
I'm not arguing, I'm telling you I'm right, and this is what our ordinance says. You have a hundred-foot setback that you cannot be within the high water mark, that's not us, that's D E P.
See, what you're arguing now, let me explain something to you. We went to court.
Yeah?
We won in court.
That's what this says, it does, it's not about your permit anymore, it's about the new structure.
So let me, let me.
Oh, you have no standing.
Point of order, point of order, he's saying something, let him speak. You're, I'm the chairman.
So what what the town did in twenty sixteen, when they dismissed the case with prejudice because they didn't want the fight to go on with with the Kayers, that's before I came on, I came on in twenty seventeen. The case went back to court afterwards.
Yes.
Okay? It was brought back again by the Kayers. It ended up in the Maine Supreme Court and the decision is right here.
Okay.
That those permits are not vested.
Okay.
Can I explain what that means?
I I understand what a vested permit is, uh, I'm not sure.
Nah, I like that.
Okay, so a vested, what a vested permit is, is if it would be vested if we granted a permit within a time limit and we changed the shoreline zoning law. That that permit is still, yes. That's what a vested permit is.
So, Mister Chair, find me.
Yes.
So, when when the permit, the initial permit application came in, the one, there was a permit application for this that was submitted to Dave Garrett, the CEO, was no longer with us. That was incomplete. Okay, and it was referring back to the vested permits. Okay, and we pushed, we sent that to the attorneys and I had and I had questions and I said basically, you have that correspondence?
Yes, we do.
Okay? And. Let me find where where Matt let this say. I had two questions for the attorney. It said, based on the court's decision, K's, Mr. Kayer's old permit are expired and not vested. And the matter of the new application is ties back to the old permits, I would assume the building permit could be denied. His new application has no description of the project, this is not the application that you have, this was, it was an incomplete one.
Okay.
That he had provided to Dave Garrett, the prior CEO. And Dave was trying to give Mister Kayer an opportunity to fill those permits correctly. Otherwise, he would have to deny them.
Okay.
Okay, so he's doing, he was giving the Kayers their due diligence to to complete the permits. Where, so I go on to say, his new application has no description of the project, he just refers to old permits in those descriptions. Again, I'm referring back to the the original application that he was making to Dave in January, February. I said, where am I clear on this subject? Based on the fact that his old project was stopped by the town that remains, the remains, what are the bones of the structure that was not completed? His old permits were based on rebuilding an existing structure in observance of, of shoreline zoning, greatest practical extent rules. Fast forward to today, the bones of the structure remain. I'm not sure if he's granted any grandfathering of the S Z O setbacks for that unfinished structure that the town never made, never made him remove the non-compliant structure. My two questions. Does that non-compliant structure provide any level of grandfathering for the S Z O sex setbacks and other applicable limitations? My guess would be, my guess would be no, since the structure was not complying and the permits are expired with any legitimate request to extend the permit. My thought to the recent application would be to advise the CEO to either, and this was a question, that I deny the application within fourteen days of application, which would set off the appeals process that they were entitled to, the the Kayers. Or have the CEO give Mister Kayer an opportunity to correct the application, the one that was made before this. Okay, so without rereading the permits in the case, my best feeling is that this would be a new structure for which all S Z O setback limitations apply, which in essence would mean he would have to remove the bones of the old structure and build the new structure in adherence of the S Z O rules. And the attorney responded, Gary, I believe your last paragraph sounds correct. Do not think Mister Kayer has any right to construct a building that doesn't confirm the current S Z O setbacks and other applicable standards that might apply to a new structure in the shoreline zone.
Okay. Okay, so we can't, we're not gonna be able to grant the permit. We're gonna have to deny it here, uh, as far as our shoreline zoning ordinance. Uh, would I be able to get a motion on that?
I think we need to make it clear that we understand this to be a new structure.
Yes, it is a new structure.
There there is no structure there now.
Yep.
And that, uh, if we're gonna, you know, use definitions, expansion or addition, it, that doesn't fit what is trying to be proposed in this permit. There's nothing that's being expanded, there's nothing being extended, it's, there's nothing there. It's been removed. The setback is obviously is a big issue. Uh, it's a hundred foot. Even with what he read, it said seventy-five foot, that doesn't, still does not fit. And I don't know if the Board of Appeals could even grant that type of variance near the shoreline. Uh, you know, given the parameters that we have here and then I wish we had a copy of that letter that you read to us, Mister Kayer, uh, from your lawyer, that'd have been helpful.
The town has that, of course Gary didn't provide it, did he?
I'm sure it wasn't purposeful, I'm just a. And listen, we're here to work with you.
Yep. No, you're not.
Well, sir, I think we all know as, and especially a gentleman of your age, not everything goes our way. And I'm afraid that with the definitions that are in the shoreline zone, as we see it now under our ordinance, it's very, it's very doubtful that you will be able to build this structure. Now, there was an option to further this to the Board of Appeals.
Yes, we have to deny the permit here.
And then.
And then it moves on to Board of Appeals and D E P, correct? Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying is, this goes to the Board of Appeals? And they turn it down like you're saying, they don't, you don't see where they have an avenue to give a variance, okay?
We can't.
Pardon, excuse me. Now, what you're saying is, we have a half-built building that we can't do anything with? Is that what you're telling us?
It's going to be the Board of Appeals to decide that they have a can.
You're telling me that the Board of Appeals cannot give a variance that big or whatever.
They're the only ones who can't grant an ordinance.
You you just said a while ago that there's no building there, you said there was no building there? We've been paying six thousand dollars a year of taxes on that building.
Is this the building?
You just said there's no building there.
I haven't had the opportunity to go visit the site.
You're going by what he told you. There is a building there, we've been paying six thousand dollars a year of taxes on it.
Listen, we we listened to what you had to say, please grant me the same courtesy. Is this the building that we are speaking of? I'm using the correct, the information that is in front of me.
Yes, that's the building that was gonna be.
Going to be, this is not erected on the site?
The roof is there, the first floor is there, we were waiting to put the glass on, which would have finished the project. And you're saying there's nothing there?
So the. No, well, my my, what I see there is a structure that's there and the fact that you bring up the taxes that you paid for, that's that's something that was built on that site. And unfortunately, it wasn't finished and for one reason or another, it never got finished until this day that we're we're still talking about it. But the taxes part, I really don't understand, it's it's a building, it's there.
It's a, it's a legal building.
Yeah, and so it's.
They can't make me remove it, it's legal.
Yeah.
We went to court and we won.
Yep.
And the building is there, it's gonna stay there and we keep paying taxes on it. Right now, the tax assessor said it's a deck with a roof. And and can can you imagine if people would get permits and start building a house in Madawaska and they'd be up to the second floor and the roof? And for some reason, their permit expired and you'd have the town manager say, oh, that's it, you're all done, you can't finish it.
Well, I I don't, I don't really see it happening that way, Mister Kayer. I think that there's a lot of things that complicated this whole story. Maybe some unfortunate things that were beyond your control. Uh, there are certain things that are beyond our control here. And that's state regulations, there are things that we have to live under and we're responsible to follow. Uh, it's really has nothing to do with our not wanting you to complete your project. It's us doing our job in the best way that we can given the the laws and the things that are are before us here. It's it's nothing personal, it's just a matter of fulfilling our responsibilities.
Can I just say? D E P is not involved in this. They're not involved in this, there's no violation. The building is there and it's not in violation of the code. It's within sixty feet, it's at sixty feet from the high water mark. And D E P has not said one word about it. They're satisfied that everything that has been done, the building that exists, is legal. What we have a right to do is say, we we would like to reapply and finish the project, that's all we're doing. And to say that what we did was illegal is false because we won in court. The town lost its court case.
Mister K, we can't grant you that variance though, that's gonna have to be the Board of Appeals.
We're not asking for variance, we're asking to continue the permit, to finish the project.
We can't grant you a permit because it's a new permit. We have to follow exactly how how it is here. It's gonna go to the Board of Appeals next if once, if we deny it here. And then it'll go, that's where they can grant you a variance if you're able to get one. And we can't grant variances here, yes, ma'am?
Yes. In the town code.
Yes.
Which was sent to us by Mister Picard.
Yes.
It says right there. You may be renewed upon, it may be renewed upon application.
Renewed, uh, it's, I mean, that's, it's six years, that it's been expired for.
Doesn't matter how old it is.
Yes, ma'am, it would be a new permit.
What if he would die tomorrow? And the kids take it over. And they don't have a chance to come up here and do whatever they need to do. And it goes years before they can finish that project.
Give you an example. We built our house at the lake in nineteen seventy. The house was twenty-six by thirty-three. We got a permit to build that, we built twenty-six by twenty, thirty-three. And then we add for a permit and we expanded. We ended up with a house four times the size that we had, we had at the beginning. There's nothing that says that you can't continue a project once you started it. There's nothing that says that you can't finish a project once you started.
Yes, there's a two, two years, so we have a two-year time limit on our permits, the permit expired. So there's nothing, this is a new permit, what you're applying for, and we can't grant that.
And the code book allows for that, it says if the permit expired, you can reapply and continue the project. In fact, in the past, in the past, we used to be able to pay.
Mister K, you applied for it, you reapplied, is what you just did. We cannot grant you that permit as written, it has to go to the Board of Appeals because it needs a variance.
I I disagree, but that's your.
Well, then, the extension, if.
There's no extension, they they removed the building, they extended.
No, what, no, I I mean in regards to the application, let's, I want to clarify this. When they applied in two thousand thirteen.
Yes.
They had two years to complete the project.
Yes.
And something happened.
Yeah, we went to court.
I'm not gonna go down the road of what happened, I'm just saying something happened. That they weren't able to complete that project within two years.
Yes.
So that puts them at two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
They could have at that time asked for an extension on that and there would have been allowed one year.
Yep.
So, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen, the project did not get completed, but they never did come to get an extent.
Yes, I did.
A continuance on the permit in two thousand fifteen to go to two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I did go to see Drew, that's the letter I just wrote, that's what happened. I went to see, as soon as we won the court case, the malicious prosecution, meritless lawsuit for a building, we won that. That the the next day, I went to see Drew and I said, now Drew, can I continue my project? And he told me, I don't know. And then I said, he said, I don't know what the court case decision is. I had my lawyer write him that letter. We were asking to finish the project at that time and it was within the the two years.
Yes, Mister K, at that time, did Drew provide you with a continuance of that permit?
No.
No, that's why we went to see our lawyer to.
He didn't tell us anything.
So he didn't do any, he did not take any action at that time?
He said, I don't know what to do, I'll look into it, and he didn't do anything.
Never got back to us.
We got, we, so we had our lawyer write him a letter and explain that to him.
Let me decipher this, please. So, when your lawyer contacted Drew, I'm under the understanding that Drew was contacted by your lawyer?
Yes, he he said.
And at that time, was there any action taken then, after the lawyer contacted the CEO?
No, he didn't do anything.
Or the current C S O.
He didn't do anything at that time. Correct.
He did not take any action?
No.
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 Well.
And Gary, when was the last court case?
The last court case was decided is, uh.
That's the last before you?
Right here then.
What year was that last?
Basically, what that court case decided was that the permits expired.
This decision was marked, we applied.
Yeah, Mister K, your attorney provided Drew a letter and Drew responded by saying he didn't know, but was there an application made at that time? And was there an application decided upon at that time? No.
He didn't tell us we had to file an application, excuse me, so he didn't tell us anything.
Hold on, ma'am, he's speaking, he's speaking, he has the floor.
Well, how come he interrupts when we're speaking?
He has the floor right now.
Fine.
There was a time when those applications could have been made. And if if Drew or the prior CEO didn't respond in a timely manner, there could have been a follow-up by the Kayers with an application to to push this along. Right, and here we are, this many years later.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
So, he's saying that he won in court. Does that town have any record of that?
The town, the case that the town brought against the Kayers, the eighty K case, with the violations that were done there, stop work order. The town dismissed that case with prejudice, basically saying, we don't wanna fight anymore.
No, no, no.
No, Mister K.
He's speaking, he's speaking.
The town dismissed that case with prejudice. The case was brought back, okay, and it went to the Supreme Court.
Which is this?
Which is that, you have a decision in front of you, it says it right there, there are no vested permits with that property. Do you want to issue a permit in defiance of the Maine Supreme Court?
Right. Mister K, were were you provided a copy of this decision? That's dated, uh, March tenth, twenty twenty? Were you provided a copy of this decision?
Yes, can I explain that? Can I explain that? Can I explain what he's talking about?
I I can't give you, I can't give you the floor.
Pardon?
I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. We got three buildings. We got three building permits. Bob Wollett issued the stop work order. I I recognized that stop work order and I agreed and I stopped construction. We went to court for two years. We went to court and the, the, when it came time for a jury trial. The town, for two years, said, we would like to dismiss this case. In other words, they were saying. We don't want to fight this. I said, no, you're not. We're going to have a jury trial and the facts of this are going to come out. I want the people to know what you did to us. The first year, the, we we refused and it went to another year. The second year, the town came back and said. We want to dismiss with prejudice. I said, no, you're not going to dismiss with prejudice. Now, dismissing with prejudice is not what Gary just said, that's not true. What it means is that the town was saying, we were wrong, you were right. You win the case and we'd like to drop it because we were wrong. What we did was illegal, what we did was wrong, and you are not in, you did nothing wrong. That's what dismissal with prejudice, it's called rejurikata. Rejurikata says that you cannot bring an enforcement action on that building again. Because it is a legal structure and it's legally existing on that law and there's nothing that the town can do about that. That is our legal building. The only reason it's not finished is because the town brought a meritless lawsuit against us. And they knew it. You know what? After this was finished, we brought a lawsuit, two lawsuits against the town of Madawaska. And we are suing the town manager, the code enforcement officer, the board of selectmen chairman. And a planning board member and, and Jeff Albert, in fact. And, uh, Don Chastity, Vince Fralaccardi. We're suing five people right now. For a two hundred thousand dollar lawsuit. And that's what he's he's trying to fight, and that's what he's trying to get around. What the town did to us was criminal, as far as I'm concerned. And we're suing them now. We've been suing them for five years and he has been keeping that secret from anybody. Did you know that, Gary? Mike, that we were suing the town for two hundred thousand dollars?
I didn't know the amount.
Did you know we were suing the code enforcement officer?
I I did not know the amount and I did not know the person, but I knew that you were in court.
We're suing the town manager Christine Tarrant, Bob Wollett, the code enforcement officer, Don Chastity, the chairman of the board of selectmen. Vince Fralaccardi, board of selectmen, and Jeff Albert. And we have been in court for five years on this lawsuit. Right now, we're in mediation. And he's in charge of that and he's been lying to everybody. He's been lying to you people.
Enough with the personal attacks, enough.
But we can only go with the paperwork that we have in front of us. And here, this is a decision that was made. On the twentieth and on the tenth in twenty twenty, last year.
And I acknowledge that, I agree with that. Yes, that's true. That decision is made saying that the permits have expired. The permits have expired. Now, I'm reapplying for a new permit. So we can finish the project that we had started, that we stopped illegally. We want to finish that project now. Do you want half-finished buildings in town?
I don't have no problem with that.
But but do you understand, Mr. Carey, that you're you're bringing this permit to us today?
Today, there.
And given the laws that we have to follow. We here today. Have to follow that and we totally appreciate the situation. I I had no knowledge of that because I'm a brand-new member. Okay, on this planning board. But given the fact that we have things here that require us to to follow it. On the point, we we really don't have a choice.
Yes, you do.
Well, we do. We can, we can do the wrong thing and not follow the law.
If if we wouldn't be following the law, DEP would be involved. DEP is not involved in this. The.
Well, I I don't think it's just a DEP thing, it's a thing of granting permits and.
Shoreland zoning.
Shoreland zoning and all of that. I think that that's what was read to me and it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
The laws, excuse me, the laws have not changed since two thousand thirteen. The code book hasn't changed.
That's right.
That's correct. That that could be correct, but but the laws are the laws, okay, and here.
They were the laws then too.
Well, that would be up to those that were running things back then, but we here as a board now, today. Have to make a decision on the per- permit that you bring to us that was a project that was years and years ago. And given the fact that we we are bound to follow these things, we would be doing wrong and we could be held.
Accountable.
Accountable for not following this. And and again, it's. It's a, it's a very bad situation, I feel for you, because I don't want withhold people from doing what they want to do. Uh, and I feel badly that you've gone through all of this work and with no results. But the work we had here is requiring us to follow the law according to Zoneman.
And what law is it that you're not following, that you're following?
Shoreland zoning ordinance.
And and what's, what is that again, now?
Our shoreland zoning ordinance for the town of Madawaska.
And and what is, what is it that you cannot give us a permit for?
For your setback from the high water mark.
What's the reason you cannot give us a permit?
That you don't have enough land.
It's a setback. You need to be a certain amount of feet from the high watermark, correct?
Yes.
Is that the only thing?
Oh, well.
That's the biggest one.
No, let, let, wait a minute now. If that's a violation, are you saying that's a violation?
We're saying we can't grant a permit.
We got a permit, we build the building. The building is existing, we're paying taxes on it. Are you saying that it's an illegal building and it should be removed?
Not saying any of that. I, what I'm saying is, we can't grant you a permit to build a structure within a hundred feet of the lake.
The the structure is built, I want it finished.
Then you have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The planning board before. Had to take into consideration certain things. Where is the septic? Do you have a foundation built under it? We have a foundation under it. What are we supposed to do? Move the foundation?
Now, the foundation.
The planning board would take things like that into consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
To make a decision.
The foundation, what type of foundation does it have?
Concrete.
Concrete, when was that poured?
In two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve.
There's no violation. What we're asking for today is to finish the project.
We're not telling you there's a violation. We're telling you we can't issue the permit because you do need a variance, and that's gonna be done by the Board of Appeals.
And will they take into consideration that we have a foundation?
We don't know.
We don't know.
That's usually the planning board's job.
But you need a variance and we can't grant that.
No, no, no. Not talking variance, I'm talking about the foundation.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm I'm telling you.
Let's not confuse them. So you're acting as a CEO right now?
Yes, yes.
You're acting, you're you're planning board, but you're acting as a CEO right now.
Yes.
To process a, an application, okay?
And we can't, we have to deny it by our shoreland zoning ordinance. And it's the only place that.
I think we've gone around over and over again, and I think everyone's made some good points, and I I really feel that we've heard. A considerable amount of information coming from the Caters and I would be the first to make a motion that we reject the, uh, the permit. As it was presented to us. Before we get there a second, I just want to state that I think we're all empathetic and sympathetic to the, to their plight. Uh, it's unfortunate that it transpired this way. I I think you can all appreciate the frustration they must feel. I I just want you to know that. That it is, I can understand your, your angst with all of this. And and, but it's unfortunate. But with what we have presented here to us today. I have no choice but to second Chris Michos that we deny the, the application.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. When you go to the Board of Appeals, please bring up the foundation that's poured and the year it was poured and everything with that two marks here, he's the chairman of that board.
Right.
Um, I'm not sure, that that may help the situation, it may not, um, but any little bit to make everybody's lives a little easier. Uh, that would be one of the big things right away.
And also, this document that was read to us from Attorney Rosenow. You may want to provide that to that board as well, if if you could, that way they have that as part of their decision. I I truly recommend that you do that as well.
Could I have your name, please? I don't have your names. I I have Seth and Mike, but I don't have yours.
Mark.
And the last name?
Mador.
How long have you been a member of the planning board?
It's a short while.
When were you sworn in?
Uh, when was it?
Couple months ago.
It feels like that.
Couple months. And your name, sir?
Chris Micho.
What is it?
Chris Micho.
Chris Micho.
When were you sworn in?
About the same time Mark was. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. Article seven, consider building permit application by Troyco Realty LLC, Tim Hortons.
I'll, I'll just kick it off, uh.
Okay.
The, uh. The architects for Tim Hortons, for Troyco, have submitted all their plans. And they've asked the contractor who's proposing, you know, that. And I guess they probably got the job to build the structure, uh, to come in and sit in and ask any questions that he may have, you guys may have. Uh, this is basically a remodel of the, of the Tim Hortons, uh, building, a refreshing, if you will. Uh, and I understand that, uh, there's some plumbing to be done. They've, they've already worked with Don. I've put them in touch with Don to shame the LPI for the plumbing permits and all that stuff, that's being taken care of. So, it's all I have. I I just wanted to give all this information to you. Um, and if you have any questions for Bob? Shoot.
So they're doing what actually?
They're remodeling the inside.
That's it, they're not expanding it?
No, it's a two hundred fifty thousand dollar project, they're basically remodeling the whole thing, inside. Kitchen through the seating area and everything.
Geez, that's not that old.
No, I'm ten years old.
Ten years old?
Yeah. Yeah, I built it, I was the one that built it.
So is that normal, ten years?
Yeah, every ten years, they do a, take out the ceiling tiles, put new ceiling tiles.
Do a complete reven? That's what you're doing?
Yeah. New, uh, new floor tiles, ceiling tiles.
But you're not adding to the building?
No. I don't see it.
That's a normal. It's a nice one. Okay, having our house. Yes, yes. I make a motion that we accept the permit.
Okay.
I second that.
Second from Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. Yep. Article eight, to consider a version power certification for installation of electric service.
So. You actually have a, uh, a couple of those. One is for Corey Moore and one eighty-three, your, your little code enforcement officer just signs up on these and you could be a municipal officer. Uh, code enforcement, non-code enforcement, uh, planning board, if not planning board, then we go to the board, so. There's a pretty strict board. It's basically a board permit.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not part of the subdivision, um.
So what is it that you want, more than electric boom?
Yeah, it's, he's putting up a, a little structure there and, uh, Florida's farm and it's just, you need electricity, this is just. The Maribou needs to have.
Yep.
A permit to put these poles in.
So you need a motion for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept that.
A second motion.
Second from Mark, all in favor? Unanimous. To consider a certificate of occupancy for a new condominium unit on Upper Sixteenth Avenue, map nine B, Lot fourteen.
Mr. Chair, do you have the one for, uh, for Dean Collins at one thirty-three Greenpoint?
I.
Or is that one that, maybe that's the one that came in later?
I don't, yeah, I don't have it on here. Put it under other businesses.
Okay, that would be other business. So.
Now, is this one that we have to walk through, Gary?
Uh. Article nine?
Yeah.
I would say probably yes.
Okay.
So I would think that, um. You know, the, I think what we should probably do is have, you know, the planning board directly to go down there as chair.
Okay.
Um, make sure that everything meets the, meets the code and.
Okay.
If they're okay with your assessment of, to give you the authority, go ahead and grant that, give it off.
Okay, so can I get the authority to grant that, to go over?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. Accepting.
All in favor? Okay, perfect. And now, article ten, to discuss an unpermitted camper installation in the shoreline zone.
So, it was, uh, it was reported to me that it was a camper that was installed on, on the Caters lot. Um, and so I went down and I had to confirm that it was in fact there. Uh, camper, you have a, an email here from Corey Clark at main D P. About regarding the, that governs the placement of campsites, campers, RVs. Uh, the D P, um, permits submitted. To, in order to have one put on. Uh, you have basically the email correspondence from main D P as to what, uh, the process for what should be done. It needs to be outside the, the hundred-foot setback. Uh, it doesn't appear that it is. Um, the, the west hill permit application. And it is a permissible activity there, outside of the hundred-foot setback. Uh, and if, if, if the camper's gonna be there for less than a hundred twenty days, you need to have, uh, like a pumpers agreement. With Madawiseptic or a pump, like a plan for disposal of your waste at D P tank. Uh, we, the LPI doesn't have, we've not gotten any plan to support that either.
Hmm.
Um, and if the camper's gonna be there for more than a hundred twenty days, it needs a full septic system. It needs to be outside the hundred-foot setback.
Not true. So, you're saying, so, so you're saying that camper is in violation?
The camper is in violation.
Um, has it been a hundred and twenty days?
No, it's, it's, it's in violation of, first of all, the, the permit was received by the town.
Okay, and then.
The camper is being installed.
No pump agreement?
It, there's no pumpers agreement. If it's going to be there for less than one twenty, it's gonna be there for more than one twenty, it needs a septic system. Needs to be outside of the hundred foot and, uh, what else? That's it. So this is technically a violation.
Enlighten me, Mr. Chairman, on violations, why would we deny, allow that?
So, in my, uh, in other words, Chris, why can't he do it?
He, he could put, the Caters could put their camper outside of the hundred foot, so there are lots of hundred twenty feet deep.
Well, we don't have that.
He's got a hundred twenty feet, he would have. If they were to park the camper side parallel with the, with the road, he'd probably have just enough, I think, to, uh, to be able to put the camper there. Camper is what, eight feet wide without the slide? Probably ten feet, ten, twelve feet with the slide?
How big's your camper, big? Thirty-five feet.
How wide is it? Do you know how, the width of it, sir?
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, eight feet, but then if there's a slide out, it goes out another.
Four, three feet.
I don't, I don't know if there's a slide out on the camper. But typically, if there is no slide, they're eight feet wide, it's pretty standard.
It looks like there's an awning. I don't think there's a slide in.
Yeah, but it's not, uh, considered a living.
Anything, anything that protrudes off it needs to be outside of the hundred-foot setback.
Even just an awning?
It's, well, if you have, if you have a. If you have a, a structure with, you'll raise.
Yeah, okay.
You don't put any structure, it needs to be outside of the hundred foot.
But again, that's if it's been there longer than a hundred and twenty.
Nope, no, no, at all.
No matter what.
In other words, he's gotta move that camper.
Huh?
He's gotta move that camper.
The camper needs to be moved. It can either be moved, uh, to be outside the hundred-foot setback, but it, but it, we do need a permit application.
Mm-hmm.
And we do need a plan.
Yeah.
If, if it's not gonna be there for a hundred twenty days in the year, and then. Then a pumpers plan or some kind of plan to dispose of, of the sewage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from the tanks, and if it's gonna be there for more than a hundred twenty days. Then we need to have the LPI certify that there's a septic system there, that the old septic system, maybe it would support us. And if not.
Just that, just that is probably no septic.
But I did talk to the LPI about it and he said that he's been in contact with the Caters for a couple of times. And to put Mr., the Caters in touch with Sarah Ashley, the person who would do the site soil survey and all that stuff, the design. Of the, uh, system, and, uh, as of last week, she hadn't heard from, from the Caters as of yet, so it doesn't appear that there's a plan. of the, uh, system, and, uh, as of last week, she hadn't heard from, from the Kiers as of yet, so it doesn't appear that there's a plan yet.
Would you be able to get us a permit?
Pardon?
Would you be able to submit a permit to us?
No.
Before our next meeting?
We don't need a permit.
You do need a permit, right here.
No, we don't.
Who said that?
Where is it in the code book? Show us in the code book.
That's right, chapter one thousand on the individual private.
Chapter one thousand is not our code book, excuse me.
It's in your shoreline zone.
Yeah.
Yes. Where does it say in chapter one thousand that, uh, we need?
Section E, individual private campsites, uh, subsection three and subsection seven.
I don't see that.
It's right here.
What, uh, Colin Clark sent you?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Where does it say that?
Gary, can you, uh, define grand pond?
The lake?
Yeah. Would a lake be considered, would Long Lake be considered a grand pond?
Great pond.
Great, excuse me, yes, great pond.
Yes.
So, they, there is a variance of seventy-five feet.
Thank you, Chris.
When you read it, in three, uh, one of the last sentences, it says classified GPA or river, a seventy-five foot horizontal distance from the normal high water around the border, so you have upland edge of a wetland, so, you could gain twenty-five feet, if, within that hundred and twenty days, I guess.
Well, I think we,
Yes.
All right. Campsite placement on, on any lot included in the intended area for recreational vehicle or tent platform shall be setback one hundred feet horizontal distance from the normal high water line of a great pond, classified GPA which is,
Right.
Or river flowing to a great pond, classified GPA, and seventy-five feet horizontal distance from the normal high water line of other water bodies.
Oh, okay, other water, it's like a river, a stream?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. My bad.
So, any, any, any water body, I believe, uh, the definition of great pond is anything over ten acres.
There, uh, I, I love the appropriate to, to, to address the Kiers person.
I think we should just request that they submit a permit.
Yeah, okay.
If you could submit a permit to us before our next meeting, would, our next meeting would be in two weeks, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Could you submit a permit to us within the next two weeks?
Could I submit a permit?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a permit.
Could, we're asking you to make a permit and apply for a permit.
Apply for a, for your camper.
Yes.
So now you're going to start, you're going to start that process, now we have to get permits to bring a camper?
Mr. Care, you need to start that process because that's the way that this is supposed to go. And then, for me, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to understand in light of all the troubles in the past and all that, that you, that you would not understand, that things need to be done in a particular way and in a timely fashion, whether you agree with it or not. And, uh, for me, it's,
But, can I, can I?
What happens to all the other people that have campers around the lake? That are closer than you?
Sorry, you,
And don't have permits?
No.
That's in our shoreline.
I understand that, but there's other people that have campers, at the lake.
Same thing.
And don't have that permit.
And they don't have permits.
They're supposed to.
No, they're not.
I made you different, yeah.
Well, then, that, that would,
Would you, would you like me to?
That's inequitable and that, that's not equal play.
Right, we, that's what I'm trying to say, because there, there are campers at that lake, whether it be Senegal, Madawaska, wherever, that are in violation of it. Because they don't have a permit.
Well, we're not too,
You just put the camper there.
Well, Mike,
We're not addressing that.
We're not addressing that.
This specific.
But no, you do make a val- no, I,
But you're asking them to make, to get a permit?
Yes.
You make a val-
You never ask the other people.
They, if they bring it, if someone brings it to the board that they're in violation, you can be fine.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Where did you get the complaint from? And where did he get the authority to come on our property without our permission? He was trespassing. You take that photo, he had to be trespassing.
I, I'm not discussing that, ma'am, what I'm discussing is the, the,
You're not discussing that, you don't discuss anything that we bring up, just what you want to discuss.
Because, ma'am, I know, point of order, I know.
Yes, point of order.
Okay.
Page nineteen of our current shoreline zoning.
Yes. It's very clear.
It, it's clear.
Excuse me, I have another statement to make.
Yes, ma'am.
We went to court just for the exact same thing.
Can you, can I explain that?
And dismissed with prejudice again.
Can I explain that again now?
Yes, sir, explain.
In two thousand and ten,
Yes.
I had a camp there on that same lot that we were discussing a while ago, at the old trailer camp, the old camp that was there. I rented it to an individual. He rented it for the summer and he brought his camper there. Same size as the one I have now. He put it on that lot. And Bob Willett cited us for code violation because we did not have a permit, and because that camper was not supposed to be there, and it was creating an individual private campsite. We went to court at the same time that we were fighting the building violation with Bob Willett. We had a meeting on June twenty-nine, two thousand and ten, with the planning bo- with the planning board.
No.
The, the selectmen, the board of selectmen. We explained the situation, they told me I needed a permit, I was in violation. I said, if that's the way you're going to do it from now on, that you're going to require permits, I'll have it removed. I had it removed within the time that they gave me, they said it has to be removed by July sixth, two thousand and ten. We removed the camper. They brought an enforcement action against us and brought us to court, district court. These cases, eighty K violations, go to district court. But I have the right to remove it from district court, like I did the building violation, and bring it to superior court for a jury trial. And we went for a jury trial. When it came time to me, with the, with the judge for, to prepare the pre-trial hearing with the judge, we met with the judge and the, and Bob was claiming that we were in violation because we had no permit. However, that's not what he charged us for. Because, when they charged us for no permit, I wrote to their lawyer and I wrote to the town manager, and I said, I want a copy of all the permits that you have issued for campers on house and camp lots. I got that under the freedom of information. And the result was, I looked and Bob has this all in one book, the court enforcement officer. It's all recorded, all the permits issued are in one book. And I went through the whole book and I could not find one permit that had been issued. And that's why Bob Willett did not cite me for, without a permit, because there was not a violation. Bob Willett cited me for, in the, for, creating a residential dwelling unit without a permit. A residential dwelling unit, in other words, we had created, we had built a house on that lot without a permit. So he brought us to court for that. It went in court again for, and, from two thousand and ten until two thousand and sixteen, when they were trying to dismiss with prejudice. However, in two thousand and fifteen, we met with Judge Dago and we looked,
Two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve, excuse me. Two thousand and twelve, before the jury trial, and Judge Dago pointed out to them that residential dwelling unit is a room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent seasonal and temporary living quarters, for only one family at a time, and containing cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities. The term shall include mobile homes and rental units that contain, that contain cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities regardless of the town per- time period rented. And, period. Recreational vehicles are not residential dwelling units. So then, it was, they were clearly meritless lawsuit. It was a clearly false accusation that we were creating a residential dwelling unit. Because recreational vehicles, as long as they are on wheels and licensed, they're vehicles. You can place them on a camp lot or a house lot.
Mr. Care.
So what happened at that time?
This comes back to,
What happened at that time, we did not need a permit and it was not a residential dwelling unit, then they said we were creating a campground. And they brought a camp tool for a campground after two years.
Mr. Care, it's really clear right here, what, what it says, and it, I mean, it's, they say, campsite placement on any lot including the area intended for a recreational vehicle or tent platform shall be setback one hundred feet. That's as plain as it is. I'm, I'm asking you to get a per- just bring us a permit, that's all I'm asking you.
It's not saying that you need a permit.
Can, let me finish, let me finish here, please. And then, what happened is, in two thousand and fourteen, we went again for a jury trial. And then, at that time, they knew they were in violation, they knew they had really brought a meritless lawsuit, and what they did is they fired Bob Willett, the court enforcement officer, they decided, so what happened is there, the town lawyer had to subpoena Bob as a hostile witness to testify at court. The same court enforcement officer that said I needed a permit wasn't true. He said we were creating a residential dwelling, wasn't true. Said that we were creating a campground, wasn't true. So, then, we decided, they asked us to dismiss with prejudice, I said, no. They went on with the other case until two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, they, we went to court again and the court said, we, then they told the court, we want to dismiss with prejudice. Dismissed with prejudice, meaning we did nothing wrong. They were wrong in bringing this violation. We, in the end, to make a long story short, we agreed to dismiss with prejudice and we won the case. Because we won the case, on the merits of the case, when you win with prejudice, means that we can sue the town. So we brought a lawsuit to sue the town for that violation as well. So now we're suing the town for two violations. Two meritless lawsuits against us. We're suing again Bob Willett, Christine Tarian, Don Shasty, Vince Fralicardi and Jeff Alber. And now, you're telling me that I have to apply for a permit when we won both of those cases?
Yes, I'm asking you to just bring us a permit, I'm trying to help you.
They had never issued a permit in the town of Madawaska for a campground, a camper on a house or camp lot. And we're not going to start it now, we won that case, you want to bring us to court?
Closer than,
Go a- go ahead, bring us to court for the same thing, on the same lot, and you will see where you get with that.
You're within a hundred.
You'll probably end up getting sued as well.
You're within the hundred feet, I'm trying to help you.
You're not helping me.
Yes.
So on page thirty-one, administration, permits required, after the effect of data dissolution, no person shall, without, without first obtaining a permit, engage in any activity or use of land or structure requiring a permit in the district in which such activity will occur, expand, change, alter, innovate or replace existing structure or renew a disินor account for town informing use. So, any, anything that's done in the shoreline, needs a permit.
Yes.
Oh, and, I think it's just, I, I think we, we really need to try to stay with what we need to do here, not always done in the past.
Yes, exactly.
Could I read something, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Picard here, sent an email to D P, Colin Clark. I'll read what he writes. I was just informed that Richard Care installed a camper on the Lake Shore lot, that is the subject of the shoreline violations. By Mister Care. What violations?
He just read some of those violations.
Yes, ma'am.
He just, he just read, that I listened very carefully.
No, he's talking about previous violations. That ultimately the courts ruled in favor of the town, which is incorrect.
Can he, can, please explain that statement?
What is that mean, that statement?
Yes, what that means, we're talking about the same property,
Yes.
That you have the Supreme Court decision for.
But where does the rule, where did they rule in favor of the town?
Against the,
On violations? Where did they rule against the?
This is not a ruling, what he read to us, Mrs. Care, I think you're Mrs. Care, I'm not sure.
Yes.
But, uh, is what the state requirements are for shoreline.
No, he's talking about violations here.
No, what he just read here, is that what you're asking, what we're?
No, what I just read, I would like him to explain what violations.
Well, if he, if they're not,
That the court ruled in the town's favor. Since we won both cases.
Yes, ma'am, that isn't what we're talking about at all, we're talking about the,
Oh, come on.
I'm, we're talking about the camper right now.
That's what he said.
That's what it's about.
It said it.
But you're talking about violations.
I was just in the past. I was just informed, should Care install a camper on the Lake Shore Road that is the subject of the shoreline zoning violation by Mister Care, that ultimately the courts ruled in favor of the town. So is that true or not? Did the town win, did court gain?
That was a Supreme Court decision.
Yes.
On the, on installing a camper on the, on that lot?
We're, we're drawing a contrast or we're drawing light to this, camper is, is subject to the same discussion, this lot, the same discussion that we had back on article,
What the Supreme Court decided on was permits.
The permit expired.
Was not anything to do with campers.
Article six there, that was something to be built forever. A camper, five minutes, you hold on to it, you're out of there. I don't, I, I know that there's a lot of campers around that lake that never had a permit. So I don't feel that you should punish one.
I'm not, I'm not asking to punish anybody, we're just asking.
What we're saying is that, what we're saying is that the camper is, is put in violation of the shoreline zoning, it's within a hundred foot setback.
So all the other campers that are there now, they're not also?
They can't be within a hundred feet.
They're not, they, they ought to be at a hundred feet.
Yeah.
The water to the road is not even a hundred feet.
Mike, first of all, the way I understand the shoreline, it's pretty clear, first, they need a permit. Then it needs to be determined that, that they can place that camper, whomever that may be, within the parameters that are put in the shoreline zoning. Once that's determined, yea or nay? And then, if it's there longer than a hundred and twenty days, or if it's there only a hundred and twenty days, they have to have an agreement with a pumping, like a nano septic of sorts.
Yeah.
That, they're the ones that come to mind, I'm sure there's others, but that's the one that comes to mind. They have to have a written agreement that they will be catered, you know, taken care of in that regards. And if it's beyond a hundred and twenty, they need to have a septic system, a well, and a power.
Or then they'll take it somewhere to drain it, or like,
A plan. No, what I read, no, what I read there is, no, not to that. Yeah, they can haul it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that like some plan.
Uh, Gary just explained to us that there had to be an agreement with a pumping.
No, they just need a plan.
Did I not just hear you say that?
Just need to have some sort of plan.
Yes.
Plan.
Or an agreement.
Yes.
If you're not going to do it yourself, then tell us where you're going to put the waste, and probably dispose of it.
Yeah.
Can I read, can I read a letter of June fourteen, twenty twelve, from the court enforcement officer, Robert Willett? Dear Mister and Mrs. Care, on five twenty-nine, twelve, I issued you a land use permit for an expansion of a second floor to a section of an existing camper and extension of approximately sixteen by twenty feet. A condition of this permit was to have your existing septic system die-tested for any evidence of malfunctioning. On Thursday afternoon, June eight, I poured a sixteen ounce container of blue dye into your inlet pipe of the tank. We let the ro- water run for about one half hour and checked the tank and field area, as well as the slope to the beach. I did not see any evidence of the, any outbreak. On this date, it appears that the septic system is functioning properly. Also, at that time, you gave me a plan for an extension to an existing camper.
Okay, so that was twenty twelve, you'd have to, so you have a septic system there?
Yes.
Could, would you be able to die-test it?
Sure.
Okay, okay, and then, uh, that way we'll know, uh,
The LPI's gonna have to test it.
Huh?
The LPI's gonna have to test it. The licensed plumbing inspector.
Okay, so Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we still need a permit.
Yes, yes, and Dawn, Dawn would have to die-test it. Okay, okay, uh, would you be able to get us some permit and some, something, meet with Dawn about the, uh, septic before our next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, not a permit, I'm not, I'm not filing a permit. Uh, not a permit, I'm not, I'm not filing a permit.
That stops it right there, Mister Care. Unfortunately.
Well, does that mean everybody else will have to get permits?
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
If that's, if that's where you-
Enforce that.
Yes ma'am.
Well, I'd like to see that.
Okay, but if you're gonna enforce that permit, but you off, yeah, I'll apply for a permit.
Cause, uh, I, I mean, I'd like to know where these, where the campers are that are closer than a hundred feet, cause they're definitely not supposed to be, not without the proper paperwork.
I know where they are.
I'm, uh, I guess I'm gonna learn.
Pass in front of it when you go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are a lot of, uh, again-
We have to, we have to follow the shoreline zoning. We're here to protect the taxpayers in the town of Madawaska. And following the shoreline zoning is helping us do that, and the other land use codes. It's for safety, for environmental, there's, I, I mean, we have to, DEP oversees the, the shoreline at the lake. So we have to, we have to be very careful what we do and what we don't do. And the other boards, I can't say how they handle situations, I can say how we handle things.
And so Seth, I would say too, a big reason to do it this way is to avoid what we're going through right now.
Yes, exactly, yes.
And what if we can't be a hundred feet from the lake? We're not even closer than the building that's there now.
Then we can work with you to get a variance with the board of appeals, the same way, if the permit, it would be the same situation.
So why don't we just skip you and go directly to the board of appeals then?
There's, there's a process to everything.
We have to, we have to deny the permit.
Oh, we have to do the process.
Yes ma'am.
We have to deny the permit, and then it would go to the board of appeals, the same way the other permit is gonna move along.
And what are the criteria for you to not deny the permit?
Has to be a hundred foot setback.
And there's no excuses or anything that we can present to you that is not feasible for us to have at a hundred feet? Like what I said a while ago.
We'd need-
Like the foundation.
Yes ma'am, we'd need a permit for that, well, for, that's for the separate structure, we've already, that's going to the board of appeals.
But you don't, you, you're not doing any of that.
So for this campsite, like the camper, we can go to the great, we may be able to go to the greatest practical, practical extent with that. Uh, so when you submit your permit, we can work with you at the next meeting to find what the greatest practical extent is, and if you have the septic system there and everything, you're already meeting quite a bit of the criteria, so we may be able to just grant it there.
It's, it's not only that.
Yes.
What Gary said again is not true. I did talk to Sarah, uh, what's her name?
Sarah, Sarah, Ashley.
Ashley, I talked to her twice. We al- already had plans for her to come and make a census, a site visit, a determination, and we, we plan on, we are going to build a septic system on our, our campground that will supply our lot on four, six, eight, for our building, because that building eventually will become residential year round, once we're able to finish it.
Okay, perfect.
So we, we already have that, I already talked to Dawn DeGane about that.
Okay.
And Sarah, we are, as soon as we get a permit to finish our building, we will, we be putting in a septic system for that building.
Okay, okay.
It's gonna be a year round septic system, not a, not a seasonal.
And you're working with, with Dawn as well to-
I'm working with Sarah right now, no, and Sarah.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
So what he said wasn't true?
No, it wasn't true.
That we never contacted her.
I spoke to Dawn yesterday morning.
Okay. When, when did you guys speak with Dawn?
Pardon?
When did you speak with Dawn last?
Uh, boy, uh-
Couple weeks back.
No, and more than that, we were at the house.
Yeah, that's right.
A month and a half ago.
Okay.
So, and what, what we're waiting for basically is, we don't wanna build a septic system if we can't finish the project.
I understand.
The building.
Yes.
And we're, we're more than willing to build it. I already had Chapman design a septic system on that lot, four, six, eight, uh, in two thousand and twelve or thirteen. And, uh, what happened is he, he was designing a engineered system, a much more costly, and come to find out, you can't build a seasonal septic system anymore. It has to be year round residential. So that's when I decided, I'm not gonna build it on four, six, eight. It's gonna cost a lot more, and it's only seasonal, and it wasn't legal. That's why we determined that we're going to build it on the campground. It will be legal, it will be year round.
Perfect, perfect.
But if you're telling me that we need a, a permit and you're going to start-
Yes, we are.
Requiring permits for everybody, or-
Yes.
You're going to find out who is in violation, enforce them to get permits. I'm all for that, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I've always said, I'll, I'll follow any law that everybody else has to follow, I want equal treatment.
Yes.
So you, you appreciate then where we're coming from, that we wanna know what the law is, as this board is today, and we wanna try to apply that law in the right way. And, and, and right now, unfortunately, it comes up against your wishes and your desires, and I, and I truly appreciate that. But some of this happens because people are not following things the right way.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we're kinda just turning things over and turning this over?
I feel that that law is not well described, because a camper that's licensed, you can have somebody from New Hampshire that buys a lot here at the lake, and takes his camper and comes here for a week. You're not gonna need a permit?
But, yeah, those, then those laws need to be changed, we need to go about-
Close your doors.
Yes, like, well, like we've done-
All I can tell you, Mike, is that the laws were loosely applied in respected campers. Not just in Madawaska, but in, in other lakeside communities. And I can tell you right now, DEP is taking a good hard look at those areas, and, and, and it's not going well.
Well, there's at least two that I know of.
And so-
Well, there's four along the, a road in San Agap.
And so-
They're certainly not a hundred feet from the lake.
We, we can't enforce septic then.
No, but that's DEP, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Look, when, when, when Bob Willett brought that claim against us in two thousand twelve, in two thousand ten for the RV, I called DEP and I talked to Sarah Mc- uh-
Stephanie.
Stephanie McLaggen, and she told us that if the town does not require a permit, they have the right to allow that without a permit. If they say they want a permit, then they have the right to require a permit, it's up to the town. If you're gonna make the code more strict, I have no problem with that, I'll follow it. But you'll have to apply it to everybody else. Now you're making the code more strict for everybody now.
Oppose the code.
What, what's gonna happen when somebody drives up with a motorhome and parks on somebody's lawn for a few days? And the code enforcement officer, you guys come up and say, you need a permit, did you get a permit? No, you're in violation.
Yes.
Here's a citation.
Yep.
So you're gonna be watching everybody that has campers now.
Gonna have to.
Okay.
What about the, the description in the code book that says, uh, an RV is a vehicle?
Yeah, but-
If you park your truck, you're in violation, cause you're sleeping in it?
No, it says recreational vehicle.
Yes, recreational vehicle.
Yeah, like an RV.
If you have a pickup truck with a cab in the back, isn't that a recreational vehicle?
Recreational vehicle, a vehicle or an attachment to a vehicle designed to be towed and designed for temporary sleeping or living quarters for more than one person, which may include a pickup, camper, travel trailer, tent trailer, camp trailer, and motorhome. In order to be considered a vehicle and not a structure, the unit must remain with its tires on the ground and must be registered with the state motor, division of motor vehicles.
Yeah, but people aren't sleeping in their pickups unless they have a camper attachment in the back.
Yeah, right, a camper, camper pickup, that's what they're referring to.
Yes, yes, so, um, it's, I mean, those types of vehicles are, are gonna be recreational vehicles under our code, and that would fall under, like needing a, a hundred foot setback from the high water mark.
If somebody's parked in your driveway there, it may not be a hundred feet from anyone about in town here.
Well, I think when they don't have that lane, did you just say that?
Then we go pr- greatest practical extent.
Cause there's lots over there-
Yes, I know.
That don't have that.
Yep.
We're back to that same point.
Yeah.
You got one there?
Yeah.
Any bit like that?
Yeah. But that's why we have to give permits, so that we can go to the-
And if you're out here then, and if we're there.
It was said by one of our selectmen deceased now. He said, Big Care, you're not gonna stop us from having campers on house and camp lots. That's what he told us.
Because he thought I was going to, I was trying to force everybody off of their camps, their house and camp lots, because I have a campground, they'd have to come to my campground. So he was saying, you're not gonna stop us from allowing that. Now you're saying that, yes, I'm going to stop you? I'm fine with that, if that's what you wanna do, go ahead.
Well, we have, we have to follow the code as written, and-
It's not, but that, you're making that determination on DEP, DEP's not gonna tell you to do that. They haven't, and they're not going to, we went to court, we won.
It's gonna fall under the same thing, like fences and everything else that we're dealing with right now, where we have to readdress the code and go through it again.
Yeah.
And that's, that's just the way it is, we, we run into issues and we have to address them as they come up. And it's nobody's fault, but that's, that's-
It's the way that we're-
Yep.
So we're doing with that, that are-
And what about past practice, that doesn't count anything?
Well, past practices causes the problems we have today.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and then I think if we keep repeating that, there, somewhere, somebody has to say, okay, there's gotta be a standard.
Yes.
Oh, I went first.
And it's, no, no, it's okay, no, it's-
I don't have a problem, I need a permit, I'll apply, everybody's gonna get permits.
What, what people have done in the past, there, we can't control that, I'm brand new, where there's a lot of things I don't understand here, but what I keep hearing over and over and over again, it was said, it was done, so and so, back and back and back. With, uh, I had nothing to do with that. But what I have to do is a responsibility to follow what's written here and there. And some of it is pretty clear. And what others did with that in the past, I don't know. But I know what I'm responsible for, because, uh, it's there, it's easy to, to, to understand, and I'm not gonna follow somebody that says, hey, you wanna jump off the bridge with me?
What you're following is chapter one thousand?
Yeah.
Yes, page nineteen.
Chapter one thousand.
Yeah, page nineteen.
Page nineteen of the code, you're talking?
Shoreland.
Yes, shoreline zoning.
Where is that, page nineteen?
Shoreland zoning.
Hey, page nineteen is, oh, chapter one thousand. Chapter one thousand is the state guidelines.
Yes.
And it's shown word. Showed word says it's a guy, it's only a guideline.
Yeah.
Chapter one thousand is only a guideline, in fact, if you look on page nineteen, E, number two, is not, is not there. It's not the same as chapter one thousand.
Cause we're less, more strict than the state, but not all of them.
It's less strict than the state. And what happens is, chapter one thousand is a guide, and it says it in, what I printed out from the internet, and what, when we, when we approved this in two thousand and nine, this goes to DEP. DEP has to go over it and make sure that it's not less stringent than the state code. And then they approve it, and it comes back, and now it becomes law. In other words, they have a guideline with chap- chapter one thousand, and then we adopt the standard shoreline zoning ordinance. And it, and they approve it, and then only after they approve it, it becomes the ordinance.
Yes, cause it is the, currently, it is in our ordinance. Section E, individual private campsites, and then subsection three and subsection six.
I can't hear it.
Section E, private campsite, you're saying?
Yes, individual private campsites.
Which number?
Uh, subsection three and subsection six.
Three and six.
Uh, sorry, two and six, I'm sorry about that.
That's the same thing that's in, uh, chapter one thousand.
Yeah, I don't have that.
And six.
That's in the shoreline zoning, Mike.
Yep.
So we're you?
Oh, Mark. That's what I was looking for, doesn't matter.
So, since you're the, since you're the planning- Uh, chapter one thousand, I printed out the, the guideline for municipal shoreline zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Municipal, municipalities need not adopt this guideline ordinance word for word. In fact, the Department of Environmental Protection encourages municipalities consider local planning documents and other special local considerations, and to modify this ordinance into one that meets the needs of the particular community.
Yes, it's the, the same as our other ones, um, so-
Could I apply for a permit for my camper tonight, how would I go about that? Since there, there's no form, no application, it's never been done.
Yeah.
So I'm starting something new here.
Gary, then just, it's just a bill, regular permit, correct?
Well, do we need to see the pumping plan?
Yeah.
Do we need to see the septic plan?
Yeah.
For hauling, you would have to have that in place, you would have to have, uh, the setback, if it's gonna be a hundred feet from the setback.
Ordinary is practical extent.
Ordinary is practical extent, so the only thing I would say is that, uh, you could set the parameters as a board-
Yeah.
For how the camper could be placed there.
Okay.
And then, once the application comes in, you could, you could be authorized by this board to go ahead and sign in this chair.
Okay.
What they had did, at the river there, is there, there's campers that get parked there, right? At that water?
So it's just a-
Is there a building application?
Yeah.
You fill it out.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if you're gonna go for one-
Yeah, they're diagramming one.
Your permit's not, trust me, your argument's not with me.
You know what I'm saying? Cause they have a campground down there-
Yeah.
That somebody made, I don't know who, it wasn't me.
Right.
Do they have a septic there?
Gary, it, everything goes to a, a holding tank that's pumped out?
So there is.
Where's the permit for that?
They don't have a permit for the holding tank, because it's illegal, they never got a permit. The holding tank goes underwater.
Cause I know, you know when they were coming with the Kaidin, the big festival that they had?
Yeah.
They, they came to the KC site at the lake, and they had marked all places for campers to park, cause they were anticipating thousands and thousands of people, I guess. But, so actually what they were doing there was illegal then.
The other thing too, is that they're supposed to apply to the state with a water test every year.
And we do-
I don't see any certificate of anything.
Every year we have a water test.
Pardon?
Every year we have a water test.
Well, where's the, uh, where's the license?
Gerald Willett, our, our buildings facilities person, every year.
No, 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 the license is supposed to be at the site where everybody can see it. I've looked year after year, never, and I was told by the previous town manager that it was at the police station. When we asked at the police station, they knew nothing about a license.
No, it had, but the septic, the holding tank they had there is illegal, the whole campground is illegal. It was built without permits, and the septic, the holding tanks, think about this. Every spring, the, the river goes over the septic systems, and that flushes out into the river. It's all illegal. We have documents from Jim Jacobson of DEP saying that I did not issue a permit for that. He would not take responsibility, because it's illegal, and he's hiding that.
It wasn't, Jerry wasn't who built the guy.
He's been hiding it, I can bring it out, he won't, he won't talk about it.
It, it's just that I feel that if a law is gonna go for one-
Yeah.
Should be for everybody.
I have no problem with that.
So, if they're instigating that you need that permit-
I agree.
As it says in the, then all the others should also.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a form that I could fill out, that's, we don't have such a form.
Is there a form?
It's just a building.
No.
Building, I don't have, I don't have it with E.
No, 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 but I mean, is there a form that exists?
Yes.
It's just a land use permit.
Okay.
It's all-
So there is.
Just a building permit.
I'm not building anything, I'm-
It's a land use permit, if you go on, if you go on our website, there are applications, or you can come to the town office and get a land use permit application.
So it's similar to this here?
Yeah, I guess.
So it's going to say, is it one story or two stories? Is it, uh, one door, two doors, other shed, carport, gazebo? And then if it's an extension or renovation, how does this apply to a permit or-
I believe it says other in there as well, and then you would put a description.
There other in there.
No.
Yes, it's a very, it says other. And then you would describe what you are asking the permit to be.
Where do you see other under what?
Well, you just read out the one door, two doors.
Well, how am I, how am I gonna say?
Other, other.
It says, I space, Richard Care, do hereby apply for permit to construct, extend, or renovate a building, or request a special expect, exception as described below. I understand that the permission to be, to build, extend, to renovate, or to request a special exception, except is subject to any, so, this, this is a building permit, I'm, I'm not building anything.
Okay, let me see.
A land use permit application.
So it would be?
Other. Other.
And that's what you're describing to. Commercial building, what is the purpose of it? Other.
Just other, check. But you would describe, you would describe it, what you're what you're trying to achieve, what you're asking the permit to be.
So all this other stuff.
No, it would still pertain. You still have to kind of
Yeah.
provide a narrative of what exactly you're trying to achieve, but if we're worried about checking boxes, this would be the obligation to do so.
Okay.
Okay. I really think you should get a special form that makes you.
We can have another meeting for that, Mr. Care.
Yes, I think we're gonna be addressing that section of the ordinance too. Like we did fences and everything else.
We're trying to help you.
Yeah.
An estimate cost of total construction. Don't fill that out.
No, no.
Okay.
Whatever is pertinent, whatever is pertinent to what you're trying to uh apply for, ma'am.
Right.
Okay, so we don't need any action on that article at this time. We'll we'll see you at the next meeting.
It was only discussion.
Yes, yes, so it's just discussion.
And when is your next meeting?
It'll be in two weeks. Gary, that'll be posted, correct?
The night, yeah.
Would you be able to notify them of one?
Is that still a bit, is that still like the the night?
Elections is on the E.
Yeah, yeah, but there was a meeting scheduled on the night.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a, there's a uh.
Board of Appeals, correct?
There's a public hearing, there's the board of appeals and we also have a public hearing.
You got one the tenth.
I don't have my schedule.
Where do you get that?
Tenth is the board of appeals public hearing.
I didn't have that. I recently did.
Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get you. I'm not on there.
No. Yeah. Okay, so the next meeting would be in two weeks.
In two weeks, so.
It'll be in two weeks, cause the next one is a public hearing, correct? And then the town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we want to address it then.
You're back in. There is none on the night?
I think there's one on the night.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing for the shoreline zoning.
So, and then there's one on the sixteenth now?
Amendments.
Yes, the sixteenth. It's gonna be every two weeks till we have a code enforcement officer who will give me.
So now we're gonna out it?
Yes, to go through.
Well, my, where do you say?
Oh, you want a carpool, Mark?
You want a carpool?
Yeah.
I have a trailer you can rent.
And does he have a permit?
Oh, Mark.
Yeah, so the the sixteenth will be our next meeting.
So the sixteenth and the thirtieth?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be two weeks after that also, yeah.
June fifteenth?
The sixteenth, ma'am.
June sixteenth?
Yes, at five fifteen.
Is it gonna be here? Uh Seth, are we gonna go to the select, the town office? Is it gonna be here or the town?
Doesn't matter. We we use this place cause it provides more space.
Okay.
So I think people.
Yeah, but the seats are more comfortable, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's what we made.
I agree.
Okay, so for other business, article eleven.
Okay, so you have, what you have in front of you for other business?
For other business, I don't have anything right now.
Okay, so.
Oh, second from Mark Seer.
Yeah, and I also have this here. Remember Seth?
And Dan Pelzer?
We get certified, Don Buller, I think, or Ashdod. Remember?
Oh, yes.
Yes, other business.
Okay.
I have a question for Gary. This uh the uh board of appeals scheduled meeting for June ten. We're supposed to be attending that meeting, however, we're not even on the agenda. Are we still on other business?
So you're not on the agenda because the you, the board, this board had to act as CEO in denying permit. So now you have to submit a variance, an application for variance. And and there's a whole process for that. The application for variance requires, and and it'll say that, your filing fees, we have to do the public hearing, you have to notify DEP. And DEP is clear, they can't, they can't provide comment on a variance until the CEO or the planning board has denied a permit application. It's an appeal of a of a CEO or planning board decision. So you're not on the the next agenda.
So we're not gonna be on the next board of appeals meeting then?
No, no, because we have to provide all that notice for the hearing and and the process has to, it is thirty days, correct?
But you've already, you've already contacted DEP in regards to the board of appeals?
DEP is going to see this, once you guys submit your variance requests based on their decision tonight, on your application, that will just process tonight. Soon as you send me that that variance request based, okay, Seth will, this board will sign it tonight. Seth, on behalf of the board, acting as CEO, will sign that tonight as denied. Will provide you a copy. You guys can set off the appeals process. Once that starts, I will, we will have to do the whole process for for the appeals as listed in our in our ordinance. Notify DEP, schedule the public hearing, schedule the the board of appeals meeting. So it wouldn't be able to happen on the next board of appeals meeting because they just acted upon it tonight.
And I should something in closing here.
Yes.
If you look at page thirty-five, H, appeals. I disagree vehemently with what Gary has spewed. It's not true. We have the right to appeal any decision of the planning board or the code enforcement officer. If we do not like his decision, like we do not like Dave Gettys' decision, we have the right to appeal that without him making any decision. In fact, if he doesn't act like he did not act, we have a right to appeal that. If you don't believe me, write to MMA and find out that I had the right to appeal his failure to act or his decision or his non-action. Anything that I disagree with the code enforcement officer or the planning board, I have the right to appeal that to the board of appeals and that's what I did and I was denied my right to appeal his failure to act or his non-decision.
Was it, was the permit ever denied though?
It doesn't have to be denied. If you read it and to hear and decide administrative appeal on the the noble basis where it is alleged by an agreed party, that's me, the agreed party, that there is an an error in any order requirement, decision, or determination made by or failure to act by the code enforcement officer in his or her view of an action on a permit application under this ordinance.
Well, I think it's said there. Isn't it, isn't that the denial?
Yeah, or it does say inaction.
So.
It's clear, but if you guys don't understand that.
I understand what you're saying. It does say inaction.
Let's, let's clarify that.
Gary has been playing these games with us for a long time.
I've got emails to verify everything, so Gary, I have no interest. There's no financial stake in this for me. I would rather see everything work out just perfectly fine.
Yes.
Okay, but I have the obligation.
No, you don't. It's not your job. You're the town manager.
I have an obligation to provide.
You have no jurisdiction, you have no, no right to do what you're doing. What you're doing is illegal.
All I'm doing is providing them information.
It's illegal, Gary, and you're gonna find out about it.
Wait, article, article, next article, other business. Let's move on.
Okay, so.
So what's this letter from Don?
That, so the garage, he he shut, he's.
I heard.
He closed his business in Frenchville and he moved it to the Quonset.
Yeah.
And basically, the agency is asking me to verify that it's got running water and toilet and all this stuff. And so we went there and we checked it out and it's it's good.
So.
We need a, we need just a vote on it, a motion on it.
Okay, I make a motion, then we accept that.
He was in a hurry to get it there and so what I did is I picked up Seth and we went down and took a look at it and I said we would just basically have the board verify.
Yeah, I make a motion, then we accept that.
Okay, what should we accept from Mike? Second from Mark, all in favor? Unanimous? And what was the other one? From Mark Seer?
Okay, so Mark Seer submitted a land use building permit application today.
Okay.
Uh I knew it was coming. He's looking to build uh a garage over on uh
Reed Street.
On Reed, undeveloped Main Street, you know, next to his apartment complex. Uh so you have it right there according to what he wants to do. I told Mark, I would put it before the board, this planning board, if they wanted to act upon it tonight.
Does he have the prob, does he own the property now?
Yeah.
Okay.
He does. Uh and I see, he's like, if you can't do it tonight, it's fine, the next board meeting will be fine.
Everything's in order, right?
Everything's in order.
Means the setbacks?
He's got a drawing there.
You got a drawing on the second page.
Okay. Careful, sure. Yes, okay, I I don't see an issue with that. He owns the property now, that's fine.
It's thirty-one feet. So that Reed Street there, what, is that ever gonna be continued or?
So what happens with Reed, uh it goes up
Two houses or something.
When it's developed there, it's considered a town way and then it goes to dirt and people traverse that and they hit the undeveloped Kanan that, Kanan's supposed to go from twenty-fifth all the way across to twenty-sixth. So they kind of just go there. So he's gonna be on the uh undeveloped Reed Avenue. Okay, so it's not declared a public way, but.
But what my question to you is that Reed Street.
Yeah.
Is that something that's ever gonna, that who does it belong to? The town?
The town. It's just never been accepted, it's never been declared a public way, but it is owned by the town. There's fifty feet wide that we own.
So it's never been uh looked at as declared, let's say like if he went and bought that land there and somebody would have bought it, they could have, they built a house and used Reed Street as an entrance?
I mean, I sup, I suppose they, it's a big question. There's probably no water and sewer going up there.
Does it go up there?
Well, I think it ends at that, it ends at.
At the last house?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but um it's not technically a a public way.
Cause the other residents on twenty-six, seven bought lots adjoining to Reed Street. Now they have lots on twenty-six, lots.
Yeah, they're double, they're like double deep.
Right, so if they would ever wanna build a garage or whatever, do they have the right to use Reed Street?
I would say they do. Would use, I mean.
I I I think the town would eventually have to to declare that a public way.
Or it's not, it's not a public way.
I'd have to verify, but I don't think that, I think that it's un, it's considered undeveloped.
Yeah.
Cause as we go forward in future, you know, land is.
Because that whole Reed there, once you hit that intersection of Kanan, undeveloped Kanan, it we actually still have fifty feet that goes into the woods and that goes way back and that was never even built upon, like the roads.
Well, they got that.
So, okay, so I I don't see an issue with him, nothing?
Did you get a land, did you take a look at it, Chris?
Oh, is he making a way to Reed Street, Mark?
So right now, uh.
Is that, is it then? To use Reed Street as a way to?
It's not a dead end, no.
No, but I mean for Mark to uh to uh access this.
He's got access permit from his other properties on off of twenty-six. He's got, he's a patamana.
Right.
Yeah, he's got, he's got access there too.
Right, but my question is, is he intending on using Reed Street as an entrance?
I would think so, yeah.
Cause if it's not, there's no sewer there, there's no water there.
But I I, without looking at them, having the benefit of the map in front of me, that that's a long parcel that Mark has there and I think the beginning of it, the north end of it, probably hits.
That house there.
Hits the uh developed Reed Street, that with, before the tarrens.
Yeah.
And then the the remainder of this property is on, is on the undeveloped Reed. So it is, I think it is touching part of the public way, if you will. And it's, there's no, it's one big lot, there's no subdivided lots.
But is he putting uh any toilets, sinks, water in there?
Is he, is he talking to Don DeChenery now? So, yeah, so there are. I, we, we talked about.
What does it say the use is gonna be, Chris?
It says heaters and.
Oh, it's the heating unit for the apartments.
He wants to heat, he's gonna be putting a big heating system in a garage there, but he's gonna be heating his apartments.
Heaters and.
So he's gotta need water there.
There's gonna be water.
Yeah.
But he is talking, he is working with the CEO. So what you could do, we can do a commission approval
Okay.
once, once the building permits come in.
Make a motion.
You know, at that point Seth can come in and once he sees all the, everything's.
Story, I think is what he wanted, right? Story.
So can we get a motion on that?
Right, yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to you, Chris.
Make motion? Second from Chris, all in favor? Unanimous? And was there one more?
Dan Pelzer.
Well, what is that one?
I think, I think I need to take another look at this one.
Okay.
Uh. It's on Lake Shore Road. I don't think it's, it's in the shoreline zone.
But he's on the other side of the road, I think, yeah?
He's on the opposite side.
Yeah, well, he owns probably on the other side, so. I don't think he can build wherever he's at, cause he pretty much built what he's got there.
Eight fifty-one.
Oh, no, that's not me.
No, you remember, you had.
That's what you were thinking.
Oh, you had opened up.
I just submitted the application yesterday, so we could, you know, we could wait on this one.
Yeah, they'll put up a beat someone.
Give more information.
Yeah, we can wait on that one then. Gary, was there anything else anybody has?
Well, I just, in light of what transpired today, I just would like to ask that make, make it clear that Gary is filling in like he's doing now, providing the information that is clear, crystal clear to the people, that he is filling in. He's doing what the code enforcement officer is not, is supposed to do.
Cause we are, we are the acting code enforcement officer right now.
All I, all I'm doing is compiling information.
Exactly.
Bringing, and it's no different when I work as CEO directly and he needs legal information, access, if there's a process that gets kicked off with board of appeals and hearings and stuff like that, the town manager gets involved, and organized and helps to facilitate.
And really, then I, I, if we do, if we, when we come back and then obviously certain folks are gonna still be here and this attack there of of, he has no right being here, he has no right being here, so that, that's it?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
That's a Gary cover version.
Very nicely put. Can't get no more.
Some people are made to do, yeah.
Oh, you know, to be combative as he is and as his wife.
Yeah, my goodness. So Dan, that.
Excuse me?
Dan Pelletier.
Yes, that one.
We're tabling this?
Yes, we're tabling that and we're gonna adjourn.
Okay, I make a motion, then do adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
All in favor?
Second, I need a second.
I second.